Evening, and we are about to start. We are going to start this evening's board meeting with our liquor control. So that will be first, so first order of business is to adopt the agenda.
Motion that we adopt the agenda?
Motion and a second, all in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we move on to approval of the minutes of the April 22nd liquor committee.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April 20, April 22nd liquor control commissioners meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second, any corrections, changes? None noted, all in favor of the approving of the minutes of the April 22nd meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one? Public comment on liquor control? None heard, unseen. Uh, we are now item four, approve liquor license, class one license.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have a consent agenda item for four, five, six, and seven.
I'll second.
Oh, you go ahead.
Okay, all in favor of consent?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now we're looking at four, five, six, and seven together.
I make a motion that we approve the liquor licenses listed in four, five, six, and seven.
You have a second?
Second.
Second. Questions? Who is HSK Park Street?
HSK is the gentleman that's going to be opening 22 Park Eatery. That's the name LLC that'll be opening up once you approve the loan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? None heard, all in favor of four, five, six, and seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Guys have it? Hi to me.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning the liquor control, say aye.
Aye.
They could all be that easy. Okay, now select board meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion and a second, anyone have anything to add or change? None heard, all in favor of the, uh, to adopt the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Reoccurring matters, item two, approval of the select board minutes for May 13th.
Make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
Any changes? All in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one? Now the warrant?
I make a motion to approve the warrant for $1,367,717.67.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any questions? None heard. How fast we can spend a million dollars? All in favor of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Anything else? Go ahead.
Just a quick one. There's an item on the warrant for $200 paying Greenleaf Design. I just.
Which page is it on, do you know?
Is that clear? Okay, thank you, thanks Bernie. Um, it's under G for Greenleaf Design. And the printout didn't have page numbers on it, so I can't tell you, but it's alphabetical.
It's on page three of six. Page? Four of six, Greenleaf and Design LLC.
Okay, it's all one.
So it, it's wrapped up in this, the, the swales weren't taken care of. We ended up having a citizen volunteer initiative to fix the swales, at least from a weeding standpoint. Highly successful, great bonding going on, all of that is goodness. However, it wasn't, the way that it was, it, this goes to transparency, I think, or being really accurate about facts. So the way that it was, um, in the first instance announced was by stuffing flyers into people's mailboxes on Park Street. And I don't know if there were some more streets as well, but I got mine because I was on Park Street. I then reached out to the town manager to say, are we going to warn this so that everybody in the town will have the same shot at being able to help and volunteer? And I was told that it's not a town initiative, it's just a citizen initiative. So now we, the town, are spending taxpayers' money on something that was a citizen initiative. And I, I just don't understand.
Um, I'm happy to start out responding. So something that if you hadn't attended meetings from last summer that you might not be aware of, was that we'd had some many discussions about how to handle the bio swales because everybody agreed they had turned into an eyesore. And, um, I think the words that I had used at the time were that it was a learning curve, turns out, because our town all of a sudden has all these beautiful gardens that we are not used to taking care of. Um, and so when it came to the bio swales, the way that I had understood the select board to sort of have left it last summer was that, or maybe it was, it was after I joined the select board, so it was one that, I, I want to say last summer, but if it turns out to be the beginning or the end, please forgive me, because that's not my forte to remember that. Um, but the way that I had understood the town to have left it was that we were going to try one year with volunteers and see, and if that seems sufficient, the way that it has for the other parks in town, then we would continue with volunteers. Um, and at that time, there was a lot of volunteer gardening going on, so there were lots of just informal, hey, do you want to join this group or that group? Um, there's, you know, for example, I had six ladies helping at Neshby today because I do that, you know, and it's nothing official. It was just tapping people on the shoulder at the parade and asking. So, um, when it comes to the bio swales, that was my understanding, was that we were going to give this a go. And also, my understanding was that we needed to be fairly careful of what we did with them because of the type of garden they are, they aren't just an ornamental garden. So in order to teach volunteers who are just doing it out of the goods of their heart, like they're not, well, I will say, the ones who live on Park Street are getting out of it that their bio swell doesn't look like junk.
Well, it's not theirs, it's the town's, but.
Exactly, but if you see it in front of your house, it, it reflects on your house for sure. Um, so, I mean, you could also argue that bio swales on Park Street aren't theirs, but as Cecil has said before, she was about to plant a tree there, so she certainly felt like it was hers.
Um, Cecil was wrong.
Mm-hmm. Um, but I think the spirit of the volunteerism is that if you would like to help, you're more than welcome to help.
So, so I think that that's, that is all good as far as it goes. And I want you to know that I went back and read all of the minutes from every single meeting last year, and I must have missed it, or I would be grateful if somebody would point out to me where the minute recorded um, notes are about these discussions about the swales. My discussions about the swales, having not seen anything after doing that reading, began in July with Mr. Hopkins, um, who told me he thought that maybe, and the words were almost exactly, I think maybe the town is maybe going to go with some, um, volunteer gardens and gardeners. And I proceeded to try to have a conversation about the fact that they were in fact not gardens, that they performed a, a necessary infrastructure function for the town. All of that is fine, and getting the volunteers to remediate a mistake that frankly the town made is also wonderful, and it saves us money. But if we really believe in diversity and inclusion, then we should be allowing everyone in this town to come together and work on those kinds of projects. And there was a wonderful article in Front Porch Forum by Wendy Field talking about, um, the sentimentality. I think she even said, forgive me if I wax sentimental, something like that, but this has really brought people together. And so I think that these opportunities to bring people together should be publicly announced so that people from a broad spectrum of economic and geographic strata can have the opportunity to participate. Whereas, there was an email sent out. Was an email sent out, um, to a select. By. And followed up with. Um, yeah. Followed up with. Um, in the Front Porch Forum. And, and I'm just saying, the information from the town manager and then in these emails conflicts. In an email from Sarah and Wendy to the gardening group, their personal friends, it says, the town is sponsoring Holly's visit and will be helping maintain the gardens in various ways, gardens. And then in an email from, uh, Mr. Hopkins, it says, Karen, it would be fine if you remind people of Saturday, there is no public body involved, so there is no warning. Even if all five select board members, for instance, chose to show up to learn and/or help, there is no consideration of public policy or decision making. This is a grassroots citizen initiative of which I have been aware and I, which I support. This is not a town initiative. If it's not a town initiative, I don't want to pay the $200 to somebody to teach some gardener something. It's, you can't have it all the different ways.
Um, I would, I was not included on that email list, I guess I'm not close enough friends with my mom. Um, but I would say that I believe that many of those lists were actually developed by, with help from me, because I sent out an email on Front Porch Forum saying, hey, like, if you're interested in gardening, add your name to the list of people who are interested in one-time projects, people who are interested in Neshby School.
When would that have occurred? Because I haven't noticed that in.
And it's nothing official to the town, so if you read it in Front Porch Forum and replied.
I'm with you. If it's not official to the town, then why is the town spending taxpayers' money?
It's this for hiring a gardener. We could train volunteers, I think that's cheaper than hiring a gardener.
If it's not an initiative of the town, I continue my question, why is it being paid for by taxpayer money? It's not transparent, it's not right, it conflicts.
Um, it is transparent, it's here in the warning, and you certainly saw it, so, um, it's not being hidden in any way. And I'm very comfortable as one of the select board members in spending the money, which is why I just voted to pass the warrant. And so.
Yeah.
If there is something that occurs in this town that smacks to a resident, a citizen here, of not being transparent and of being a conflicted use of taxpayers' money, we're entitled to bring it forward. And I'm not going to feel intimidated by the fact that, uh, you feel good about what just happened.
Well, we've already voted on the warrant, and it has passed, and, um, it was on front page forum at least two times, I know. And we would only have to warn it if it was a town business meeting, so that's why it would not have been warned, but it was put on front page forum for people to attend, so.
Um, that's all right. Expect that I'll be bringing one of these, um, every meeting, because that's how often this town is not communicating clearly with its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I submitted my report in advance, I would like to just highlight a couple of elements from it. One is to draw attention to the fact that we had our FEMA, uh, transition, recovery transition meeting, and that was very successful. They have turned.
Thank you. Um, I would like to pass on the, um, kudos from the board for how good the, uh, town group, uh, has downtown looking today for the festivities. Um, everything looked really, really nice. Um, any other questions for the town manager from the board? Questions for the town manager? Pardon? It's not, it's not working, it is working? Okay, questions for the town manager on his report? None heard. Moving on to item four, rec directors' report? The microphones don't seem to be working again.
So, if you see enough, okay, all right, anyways, we don't want to feedback, we want to give these guys an opportunity, so I'm going to eat the mic. Ah, all right. This is a collaboration with Otter Valley Parents of Wrestling Group, and will feature instruction for Vermont State University Castleton wrestlers. This is a twice-per-week offering that will run through August 1st in the Otter Valley Wrestling Room. Miss Michaela Dance Spring Recital was a smashing success. This program is grown each year and would not be possible without the work of Michaela Newell and her helpers. A semi-silent partner gives the town a great rate of use on a dance rehearsal space, and Otter Valley's walking stick theater allows us to use the auditorium for the performance. This program is poised to explode with parents already asking about the fall offering. The New York City bus trip scheduled for December 14th is open for registration. History indicates that it will sell out sooner rather than later, so register today at BrandonRec.com. Summer plans for improvements to parks include two water fountain installations, one in the Dog Park and one in the Seminary Hill Playground. The town will use highway and building and ground employees for installation. The Dog Park side will be funded using Dog Park funds, and the Seminary Hill side will be funded by Brandon Fire District Number One. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Questions for the director from the board?
Thanks for a great, thanks for a great dance recital, it was like super adorable.
Uh, questions for the rec director from the public? Thank you, Mr. Moore. Item five, Wheeler Road Bridge and Culvert Study, uh, grant acceptance?
I'll be taking that, Mr. Bailey, uh, we were awarded, uh, this was applied for by former town manager Dave Atherton, with pushing of the board to apply for and received, uh, funding for the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant. Um, it's actually 2022 is listed as the time, but this is to provide a scoping study to look at the, the beginning of Wheeler Road, there's a bridge and a culvert that are to be, been determined to be undersized. And because of the work we've done at the beginning of Wheeler Road with the, that was actually our initial buyout, was right there at the beginning of Wheeler Road. Um, this is moving along with that same, in that same scope, and it's what gave us the ability to get this award. Our work doing the FEMA buyout, again with this hazard mitigation, the opportunity to have an engineering firm provide a scoping study to determine what would best go to replace the culvert in the bridge there. And this is a $75,000 grant that requires a $25,000 match, 5,000 of which will be matched by Vermont Emergency Management. So it would be a $20,000 commitment for the town to get this engineering study done. This is something that we've learned, is that we do not have engineered plans available for when federal money comes to us to improve these infrastructure, uh, needs, that we will be passed over. So this is an investment in getting federal funds further down the road to replace that bridge and culvert which have been determined to be undersized. And the commitment from the, from the town of Brandon would be $20,000, and this would need to be completed by the end of '26.
So Phil, am I understanding correctly, so this is a study so that we have the plans? And then we can use the plans if and when federal funding comes up, but we know that we're more than likely going to need it because it floods all the time? Is that sort of the?
Yes, and we've been given indications, again, if we do this study, we'll be eligible for more funds down the way. And because of the work we've already put into doing our hazard mitigation, I mean, Brandon is looked at as a shining, lay a guiding star for communities within Vermont with the aggressive nature that we've taken on with doing our hazard mitigation. Um, projects that include Armory to the Banks, of course Swifty the Culvert Downtown, which has saved our culvert, and the Hazard Mitigation Biots that we're currently in the middle of doing along Newton Road and other problem, problem spots.
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the, um, the grant.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to accept the grant, um, any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Guys have it? Grant accepted.
Mr. Chair, uh, before we move on, I wonder if the board would consider designating the town's match source at this time, and I would recommend the 1% fund.
I make a motion that we designate the 1% fund as our matching money source.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Um, my question is just, will Sue give us, um, like something to sign off, or do we not need to? To get that money officially awarded?
She will bring you a transfer order when it comes time for that money to actually move. Like until then, it's just staying in the 1% fund with a restriction on it.
Okay, thank you.
We need to vote on that.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to designate, uh, our match from our 1% fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? You have the grant and the match. Item number six, repeal of Act 250 jurisdiction ordinance requesting one acre review.
Mr. Chair, at the second meeting of April, the second regular meeting of April, um, I gave you this memo to introduce the topic, and per the board's practice, we laid it over. I haven't received any further comments at the town office regarding it. Um, so at this point, uh, it's ready for the board to consider whether it wants to repeal this ordinance. And we would go through the normal policy of adopting an ordinance to repeal an ordinance, which is that you would make the vote here, and it would come into effect on a date that you designate unless there was a petition of voters who objected.
Pleasure of the board?
Can we table this one more time? Can we table, we table this for one more meeting?
Um, why is that?
Like to get some more, more information if possible.
Um.
If the select board would like some more information and would like to let me know what they would like me to provide, I can find that. I didn't, I was not aware that there was a desire for, um, any additional information.
So prior to this meeting, um, I, I speak with Seth at least once between select board meetings, and you had explained this to me, but can you explain it to me again, please?
So the town has, uh, zoning, which we call Blue-O, the Brandon Land Use Ordinance, and the town has a subdivision, a set of subdivision regulations, if somebody wants to divide a parcel into an actual like housing development, like Mount Pleasant or Forest Brook, for example. In Vermont, in the default position, right, if the town doesn't do anything else, the way it works is if a developer comes and has plans to do something on a lot that consists of 10 acres or more, they have to satisfy local zoning, and they have to satisfy the local subdivision regulations, and then they go through Act 250 review. That's the default position in Vermont. The state gave the towns the option to move that down from a 10-acre minimum to a one-acre minimum, triggering the Act 250 review. So currently in Brandon, if you have a lot that's two acres, for instance, or one and a half, or anything over one, you have to comply with the Brandon Land Use Ordinance, you have to comply with the Brandon subdivision regulations, and then you also have to go through the Act 250 review process. So this proposal is, is basically to say that a number of years ago, Brandon's chief concern was overdeveloping. That's why the town instituted, let's draw down that 10-acre rule to just one acre. People work around things like that, for, you know, there's, there's an example next door, right? So that parcel that is now, that was Gene's Mobile, was more than an acre. And for them to develop it without going through extensive and expensive Act 250 review, they separated a portion of the parcel off, the town bought it for the parking lot, and the lot that's in the front was not subject to Act 250 review. Act 250 is a good thing, it's been a good thing for Vermont. It does mean an investment of time and money to go through it. And so there were reasons at the time that the town wanted to do that, there were concerns about the ability of the school system to absorb more students. There were concerns about, um, any, any of a number of the town's services being taxed too far, or pushed too far. Um, I think that we're in a different situation now, where we are looking to do development that's responsible and thoughtful and smart. I, I would emphasize that if the board were to repeal this ordinance, any development at all in the town would still have to meet the requirements of the Brandon Land Use Ordinance, still have to meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations that Brandon has adopted. The only difference is now you'd have to be more than 10 acres to trigger the Act 250 review instead of being any parcel of any size above an acre.
And the concern is that Act 250 is expensive and time-consuming for developers, so it's prohibitive for people who might want to start a business or build a house.
It can be a deterrent, yes, I, I think Mr. Moore has had some examples of people who have had potential projects that they were considering in Brandon. And when the, um, realization came that we have Act 250 review for a five-acre parcel here, for instance, um, people have decided, okay, no thank you, um, that's not worth the investment of time and money for me for such a small, relatively small development, I think I will try a different plan someplace.
Yeah, I, I think this is an important way to, um, foster affordable housing, and that, that's why I think it's, um, it's smart to move forward on this. Okay.
I can't hear you.
Right, I think, um, it's important to do this repeal. Yep, yeah. I think it's important to do this repeal so we can, um, foster affordable housing in town. And so I think it's smart to go back to the 10-acre, um, minimum. And, um, I, I would like to see us pass this.
I've got a question, so if somebody, you know, make believe, I'm going to buy six acres, and I want to build a house, in Brandon, that means I have to go through Act 250. and I want to build a house in Brandon, that means I have to go through Act two fifty? Or is it more for businesses?
So if you're going to do residential development, there's a limited number of criteria that you would have to do with Act two fifty. You still, you do your local zoning permit, there wouldn't be any subdivision thing involved unless you were buying that six acres off of a bigger parcel, if it was being separated. And at that point, the Act two fifty review is, it's a certain number of criteria that the DRB has to look at. Ralph's been on the DRB. It's not the whole shooting match of, of all the Act two fifty criteria.
Ralph, can I put you on the spot? What's your opinion since you've been on the Development Review Board for? Stick it in your mouth. It feels like it.
My opinion on this, I think it's, I think it can be good, but I can see some, some negatives to it too on businesses, you know? If, if, if somebody buys a, an acre parcel in Brandon next to you and wants to put a, I don't know, an all night truck garage or something. I know it has to pass local stuff, but does Act two fifty protect a neighbor from that happening?
I mean, right now, absolutely, but our land use ordinance also protects you as well. I mean, like even if you're putting a porch on your house, your neighbors have an opportunity to appeal your permit, go to the Development Review Board and have some, some sort of concerns met by the Development Review Board at that point. So we're not in a town where we don't have a Development Review Board nor a robust ninety-four page land use ordinance that dictates what happens in Brandon, you know? I, I, and I'm going to take the opinion that when they thought about Act two fifty, a lot of towns didn't have that kind of administration to stop or at least provide opportunities to question that kind of development. Whereas in Brandon, we have a fairly, we have a part-time zoning administrator. We have a Development Review Board that it could be appealed to as well.
But, but that's only if your permit triggers a Development Review Board. If you fit the land use ordinance, you don't go to the Development Review Board.
But you, but you as a, as a, as a joiner, as a butter would get a permit and you would say, wait a second, they want to put a truck stop next to my place. No way, I'm appealing this. And that triggers the process where you're going to end up going to Development Review Board.
But I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars to, to trigger that process if you're the neighbor, right?
I, yeah, a DRB hearing is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's just, that's a concern.
I could absolutely see that as a concern. The, I mean, from an economic, you know, switching hats, I put on my economic development hat, like this definitely has been a problem. I'll point to one specific example, actually two examples. The, the latest being a gentleman purchased some land north of town, wanted to put up a, a putt, a putt, a golf place. And this has been a two plus year process where it's, it sailed through our process. He had DRB hearings and yet Act two fifty beyond that cost him not an insignificant amount of money. And now we're at a point where we're two plus years on and he has an opportunity to build. And he could have walked away at any point at that, you know, at that point. And again, I, I see, you know, we, we have the land use ordinance, we have the opportunity to, to oppose development or at least question development with our, again, ninety-four page land use ordinance that provides the opportunity to, you know, I mean, fences are, you know, are setbacks in the fences. I mean, like we, you know, we're not the Wild West necessarily that we had during Act two fifty years.
I think, I think you're right. I think ninety-nine percent of the time is probably going to be good. I'm just that other percent. Is it worth not doing this? I don't know.
I hear you.
Um, I'm going to go back to Brian's first request to table. Does any other board member want to go two more weeks? To investigate anything else before we move forward?
Is it, is the importance, this is done tonight or waiting two weeks doesn't cause any?
It's not a matter, matter of urgency. It has waited a month. If, if there's a specific question or specific information that is desired, it would be desirable to have that information forthwith so that it can be reported back to the board at the next meeting.
You want to come up to the?
As, as you walk up, Ms., I just wanted to say one thing. And i- i- they're rewriting the land use ordinance as we speak. So if we wanted to look at those fees and make them less onerous or perhaps even maybe waive them as a possibility to, if you have an appeal and if you lose the appeal, I mean, there's ways to massage that two hundred and fifty dollars if that's a financial barrier for people.
I, I would just like to say I find the discussion very, very helpful. So thank you everybody for that. Is there, my, my two questions are this, is the process such that if we initiate a repeal, it goes all the way up for legislative approval or is it something completely within the town's control? And are there fees, legal or otherwise, that we will incur that the town of Brandon will have to pay in order to change our bylaws?
We'll have to publish the select board's notice of repealing this ordinance in the Brandon Reporter.
So, and what does that cost?
Less than a hundred dollars.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, um, I will say that we have four to table. So we will table it until?
Oh, they're not here.
Pardon?
They're not here, yeah.
Okay. We will table for one more meeting and definitely act on it on the next meeting. Yes.
Is, is this the Act two fifty that's up in the State House right now? Is there more to it? I mean, can we get a, a copy of exactly how it's changing beside this acreage? I mean, I think we'd want to know all of it.
So Act two fifty is fifty plus years old at this point, right? And this, the legislature did make some changes to it in this session, which I am not, I'm, I'm not conversant with enough to talk about them. But I'm sure that in the acts of the legislature that are on the legislative website, we could all comb through that and, and find out what it, find out what changes made it through.
Right, I've gone on that website. I mean, I know it's right now, it's in, it's in the voting process to accept it. I think that's where it's at.
The legislature's adjourned for the season. So either it passed or it didn't at this point.
So why are we talking about it if it passed?
So, so Act two fifty will still be regardless of what the legislature did, right? They either kept it unchanged or they modified it, but kept it. What we're talking about is when the review happens. Does the review happen in Brandon if you're developing more than an acre, which is what it is now? Or does the Act two fifty review happen only if you're developing more than ten acres? Which is the default position in Vermont.
Is, are you saying that's when it would change from the ten acres to the one acre?
It would change from the ten acres to the one acre by the select board making this action that's been proposed?
So we, so we have to vote to say that, to go to one acre?
The select board votes, right.
It's just not mandatory once it's accepted at the State House?
I don't believe this legislature contemplated changing this exact provision. I don't, I don't recall that there was a discussion about this one acre versus ten acre review.
We're tabling it for a couple of weeks. I think more needs to be looked at. I mean, I'm going to try to do some more. Thank you.
Yeah, we are tabling it for two weeks. Everyone, get your questions answered. On this issue.
I'm just curious if you're going to call community members to see if there's any feelings from area residents one way or the other on your feelings.
Thank you. So item six is table for two weeks. Item seven, designate a name for a private road which is off of Birch Hill Road.
Mr. Chair, you have a memo and a map in the packet as long, as, along with the Town of Brandon's street naming ordinance. So the E nine one one coordinator wishes to assign a road name to what is currently a private road that serves a camp and a few other parcels that are not developed with any kind of structure. We solicited suggested names from the landowners, including the abutting landowners. We reviewed those with the E nine one one coordinator, Tom Kilpeck. The recommended private road name for consideration of the select board is Spike Horn Lane. This came from one of the landowners with an alternate name for consideration of Starlight Drive. These names were screened by being dissimilar to any other named roads in Brandon right now so that emergency services would not be likely to have any kind of confusion by naming the road a name that is already similar, that's similar to an existing road.
Would a board member like to make a motion on one of those names, please?
Second.
Motion and a second for Spike Horn Lane. Any further discussion? None heard. All in favor of naming the road Spike Horn Lane, please say aye.
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 Oppose? No one? Ayes have it. Uh, item eight, Spardella updated quote.
Mr. Chair, the updated proposal from Spardella's slate is in the packet. And the additional information that I have to add for you is relates to the schedule and the chimney. They are committing one way or the other, whether they do the, do it themselves or whether they procure a subcontractor for us. They're committing to being able to rebuild the Northwest Chimney, which is the one that was damaged by the wind and is no longer a functional chimney. It's not required for the building's use anymore. And the other piece of information from Spardella this morning is that there's an eight to twelve week lead time regarding the slate, but they will order it when the select board is ready to sign the proposal. So my recommendation is that we don't delay this, but we proceed with the revised proposal and that again, any overage that's not sufficiently covered by the ARPA money that was set aside, be funded from the one percent fund.
Pleasure of the board.
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept this proposal.
I'll second. Discussion?
So I'm at a little disadvantage because this came to us Friday. Town clerk was out today, was a holiday. I don't have the exact number from, from the town treasurer. It, it's, it's, no, it's, it's, it's an understandable question and I wish I had the answer to that question. It would be the balance of what was not expended from the solar proposal plus, plus the amount that the select board set aside several meetings ago.
Any other questions?
I'm not in favor. We had a local roofer and he looked at it and he didn't think it needed to be done, but we didn't think, or some people didn't think that what he said was any good. So I don't think there's going to be enough oversight on this job. And I'm concerned it's going to cost more than what we anticipate.
Mr. Chair, I did meet with the local roofer and we went through his numbers. And at the end of a reasonably thorough examination with him and me and Tracy Wyman, we arrived at a number that was in the same ballpark. And his, his initial sense that it seemed like a lot of money turned into a sense of, well, if he's doing this and he's doing this and he's doing this, which is laid out in the quote, it turned into a, well, it's, it's a reasonable quote for what he's proposing to do.
Not, I'm not sure we have anybody qualified here to, you know, to oversee what's going to go on. You know, how many slates are, what percent of slates are being saved? They don't know. How do we know what's going to happen?
So how would we move past that? Because eventually we're going to need the roof replaced.
I'm aware of that. I'm just saying I'm not, I'm not that comfortable with it.
Uh, Mr. Hopkins, we had some money left over from the insurance claim on the chimney before also.
Right, so that, that would be called upon.
Roughly how much was that?
Ballpark. I think the claim was forty, I think the settlement was forty thousand dollar range. And I think we spent about fifteen on the boiler replacement, so there should be about twenty-five left.
From, from looking at the annual report, we had two twenty-six, five in ARPA money. And hopefully another fifty thousand from the remainder of the solar array. And then that twenty-five puts us up to three hundred and one.
I think forty, forty left in the solar.
Forty left in the solar?
And we used about ten, right? Or no?
Fifty, it was sixty, sixty minus ten, sorry, roughly.
That was an overestimation based on the assumption that there was still one remaining outside invoice, which Mr. Hopkins cleared up at the last special meeting when we were talking about the budget, that he didn't anticipate that coming in. The total expenditure so far has been four thousand, six hundred and some change, I think forty-six thirteen, but four thousand, six hundred. So it's upwards of fifty-five hundred that's available.
Fifty-five thousand. So those, those numbers add up to more than three hundred thousand on a, on a bit of two ninety-four. We have a motion and?
They, they did indicate today that they would like to do this job this season, but they do not want to start a job this large late in the season. I think that's why the?
I had to re, I had to redo my roof in December. And the roofer gave me a really good estimate before I contracted with him. And that's usually how things work, isn't it? You get an estimate before you commit or sign a contract.
That's what we have.
What is it safe for that?
It's two ninety-four eight.
But I noticed too, you're using ARPA funds, you already hit it up for twenty-five grand for the paving on Wheeler Road for the bridge. So I keep hearing one percent local options.
This is not one percent money.
Okay, good. All right, so that's the estimate. It's about what, almost three grand, three hundred, that grand?
The estimate is two ninety-four eight.
What was the other estimate that the other folks had?
They were much higher.
And they, but they, they gave you an estimate, but they don't know how much needs to be repaired? That to me is a little odd.
That's, that's not the case.
Okay.
The proposal is for a full replacement of the roof, everything. If there are slates on the roof that are in good enough condition to be reused and salvaged for this job or for other jobs, we will be credited that amount.
But I also read too that they don't know what's going on with the sub roof. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we don't know what it's going to cost?
Well, we do know what it's going to cost. If they replace the sub, if they replace the deck, there's an additional amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred that's been quoted to redeck the entire roof.
And that would be the entire deck, which would not need the entire deck to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. All in favor of the motion to commit to? All in favor of the motion to commit to Spardella's slate to do the roof, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I get opposed. Record shows four one. Item eight, review select board rules of procedure. Item nine, review select board rules of procedure regarding the public comment. Anyone like to start us off?
I make a suggestion. Vermont League of Cities and Towns has suggested that it can be useful to have reasonable time limits on public input, which allows meetings to be efficient and for the public to have their chance to have input. And so I'd like to see us update our rules of procedures to include a two minute time limit on public comment.
Motion.
Would you like to do this all by motion or is there other things we're going to talk about? Were there other things we were going to talk about as well?
Excuse me?
I want, and even if I didn't want to, I need to hear from members of the public or most part of the board, get a opinion about matters of both of these things. Like I said, Brian, you have to really get, like, you better hope I'm not here to, because that would be bad. Justin, that said, who's talking?
Who's her?
In town, over the past few months, it's been such that I really can't. I can't do my best thinking and be responsible with my membership on the board and really doing my best thinking when I'm feeling quite as much volume and intensity of people speaking, criticisms and expressing, you know, their emotional disappointment rather than specific conjecture. And I, I mean, I guess think what you will of that, but I, as a human being, and as somebody who works, I'll bring, I rarely bring my work into this, but I will. Just thinking about when I work with kids who are working really hard, they can self-regulate it throughout their day. And thinking about, you know, how do you handle? Might have for me, depending on the moment. But I don't then expect them to go and do their best division work. And I can speak only for myself, but I personally am really struggling with the amount and type, the amount of certain types of public comments I'm getting. I'm really, really happy to have suggestions and questions. And I mean, I wouldn't say I'm happy, but I understand that sometimes I will hear, hey, I disagree with you, Heather. But there have been times where it's a long time that somebody speaks about how disappointed they are in me, us. And quite frankly, it has been very, very difficult to switch gears and think about the level of lung and to reach the smart decision. And I don't know that it's wise of me to cop to that in front of everybody, but it is the truth. Is that I think I'm a pretty resilient person and I've been a resilient person. And professional life has taught me lots of those skills. But I don't want my speech to be that bad. And if something doesn't change, I don't really see how anybody would be able to stay on the board for very long.
Would you like to go through them, one through seven, there are seven items? Or how would you like to read this? I think we could read each one and decide if there's a change in that brief statement.
Sure.
So item one says, all meetings of the body are meetings in the public, not of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the body so long as order is maintained and according to these rules. Can you see any changes in that first statement? No. Item two says, an agenda item dedicated to public comment will be part of each meeting, which we have always done, but I don't see any change there. Item three, comments by the public or members of the body must be addressed to the chair or to the body as a whole and not to any individual member of the body or the public. No change. We've been getting away from that. Item four, members of the public must be acknowledged by the chair before speaking. Think we're doing that? Any change? Item five, if a member of the public has already spoken on a topic, he or she may not be recognized again until others have first been given the opportunity to comment. Don't think we need any change there. Item six, order and decorum shall be observed by all persons present at the meeting. Neither members of the body nor members of the public shall delay or impede the proceedings or the peace of the meeting or interrupt or disturb any member while speaking. Members of the body and members of the public are prohibited from making personal, impertinent, threatening, or profane remarks. Change there?
No, that's wonderfully complete. I think the challenge is enforcing that.
Seven, members of the body and members of the public shall obey the orders of the chair. Didn't know I had someone's power. Or other presiding members. The chair should adhere to the following process to restore order and decorum of a meeting, but may bypass any or all steps when he or she determines in his or her sole discretion, the deviation from the process is warranted. And then they have an A, B, C, D. Call the meeting to order, remind the members to applicable rules of procedure, declare a recess and table an issue, adjourn the meeting until a time and date certain, order removal of a disorderly person from the meeting. So where in there would you determine to put time limit? It would have to be in six or seven. Or a new number.
I think it could go under number two. Yeah, two, under number two, we could have the addition that a two minute limit is in place and may be waived at the discretion of the chair.
Motion.
I make the motion.
Anyone want a second? I will. We have a motion and a second to add a two minute time limit.
Well, and since this is the time for discussion, I'd love to promote at this point that this concept of participating and trying to have things happen in a board meeting is really quite profound. And I know as a board member, if I want something to happen at a board meeting, I talk to people and get information together and make it so people are the most prepared to have a meaningful discussion. And similarly, if a member of the public wants to come forward and have something happen at a board meeting, it's most productive to sit down beforehand with either our town manager or one of the select board members and have a discussion and try to win over support for the idea. This is what happens at the state house when you go to talk to one of your representatives and try to get them to support something you want to see happen. This is the most productive way for our meetings to be able to be fruitful. And so in that way, it's unlikely that someone would come to a meeting and just out of the blue have some profound change. That more likely that would come in the form of conversation prior to a meeting. And that's why I think two minutes is actually a sufficient amount of time to speak and share a thought.
Other discussion by the board?
I'm against it. It seems like we're trying to silence people. If they want to come speak, I think they deserve to have the opportunity to speak. Takes more than two minutes. Well, it takes more than two minutes. You shouldn't have to hurry people out of here.
As a add to that, I would say that we checked with what our school system does and they allow three minutes total for all comments. If you, if someone stands up and takes three minutes, nobody else gets a chance to speak, which I don't think is very fair to be honest with you, but.
Like one change that I didn't understand that passed was make public comment. Well, past practice was having a public comment at the end of the meeting. And I feel like driving down there in my jammies and walking barefoot.
I don't know how to do this.
But I think that most recently, I can remember seeing two couples who were here with the, well, one single, Karen and Karen and Andy. You know, they had to wait for quite extensive public comment. Sometimes that's just the way it goes in a public. You know, you just sort of think, well, part of it now. But I think that having it at the end of the meeting helped me personally. I've been curious kind of how this change go and then after this, if feeling like that just makes it like, thank you, you're to gamble. Maybe I'm the only one, but if that makes it feel more manageable to sit at a select board meeting in front of an audience, then that would be fine. But I think anybody who's got enough stuff wrapped up and rough to walk and criticism, sometimes rightfully, I'm not saying that they aren't, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't hear that. But leave it, Ben, more than it was a.
Neil has his hand up on, go ahead, Neil.
Hi. Hi, I don't know what the issue is, but when Heather's speaking, I can't hear.
And we didn't hear the town manager report.
And we didn't hear most of the town manager report. So something, somebody needs to check the microphones, I think.
Well, I know for one, having been on the board in the past, it never seemed like a time limit was necessary this year. I personally feel that it doesn't take more than two minutes to get up and state an opinion. And the way Tim worded it, that it can be waived by the chair. So I have to say I'm not opposed to a two minute. And if it's a subject that is near and dear to the town and something that is important, the chair can waive it. If it's someone standing up for two minutes and telling us that we are not doing our job, then I think two minutes is plenty of time to say that. So I, having watched, been here at the last meeting and watched it two times on Zoom and having Karen's eight minute, eight and a half minute dissertation, that's where I know I might change. So you had your hand, I will let you speak.
A great number of towns have a limit to the time that someone can stand up and give a statement. A great number of the towns do have a limit in their rules and protocols. Two minutes is at the absolute lower end. Two to five minutes seems to be the range across them. I think that the board should take into consideration that the long and heated and emotional comments that have been made over the last few months have fallen within a budget period. The most contentious budget period that this town has had in many years with multiple revotes. And this exact board standing here and suggesting at the beginning, something like, you know, 16 or 19, I never could tell because the number changed frequently, but upwards of 15% increase at the beginning that went down to a 0%. And I could show you articles, because I see you shaking your head, in many different publications where even the town changed the number by some percentages. So it was hard to follow. I did give an eight and a half minute dissertation and it was shorter than Ethan's speech when he got up and emotionally spoke. It has happened across the body politic as they engaged in this election process and in this budget process. And I would say that the one good thing that I think has happened in the last couple of months is people have gotten involved in this town. Now, the pendulum swings, my mom used to say. So you know, you have nobody involved and then maybe you have too many people or too actively involved and you're like, whoa. But I would say that the select board has been moving in a good direction to engage with citizens. I'd hate to see you snap it back to almost nothing.
Mr. Chair, clarifying question. Was the intent of the motion two minutes total for public comment or two minutes per person? It maybe needs to be stated. It maybe needs to be stated in the.
This is two minutes per person and two minutes is actually quite a long time. And the board chair has the discretion to wait.
Mr. Carr.
The town meetings that we have, when I was moderator, I adopted the same thing that Charlotte Chikela had for 25 years. I did it for five and I think Bill has adopted the same process. It's two minutes per question with a short question for clarity, a follow-up question for clarity. That would give you the ability to have a little extra time, but it does not allow you to open up a new question area. And to me, that sounds like it would be a fair way of doing it. Also, this, these last few select boards, I've never seen before. They are open to discussion from the public throughout the meeting with every question that comes up. I don't remember that happening early on when I was going to select board meetings. So there's plenty of room for public input. And if we do the two minutes with a follow-up during the end of the meeting, public forum, that should be more than enough for everyone to be satisfied.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Any other question or comments from the audience? I would like to say, where? While you're getting there, I'm just going to take one minute. I would like to say I agree with what Tim said is someone has something that they feel is important and should be worked on, they can contact any board member or town manager. should be worked on, they can contact any board member or town manager to get it on the agenda, and then it can also be discussed. That's a better way to move business forward. Stanley Mail?
I'd like to add to this. At the last select board meeting, I listened to a man tell lies about me and slander my name. Why, I do not know. It had nothing to do with the agenda. If he did it for his wife's sake, that was also inappropriate. Nobody on the select board said anything about that person speaking being inappropriate, and it needs to stop. When you are looking at public comment and procedure, be sure and include yourself. Yes, you need to protect yourself. You also need to protect the audience. We come to these meetings thinking we are in a safe place. Let's actually make that true. The next time reporters post my comments in their newspapers, please tell the truth. I'm not here for your entertainment. I've come to a meeting to offer my opinion on issues pertaining to our community. If you do not like what I say, you do not need to report it in a way that is offensive to me and my family. I am not your whipping post, and I ask you to be fair to me, and I will be fair to you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm to move the question? Okay. We have a motion to add on item two, under the public participation, a two-minute limit which can be waived by the chair. So I will move that question. All in favor of adding that to item two of the public participation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
And I think I'd like to, I'd feel most comfortable with one change at a time, and I certainly am not the opposed to a limit of... So I guess it's sort of a day that happens.
Yes. Where?
What you are saying. And Heather, I haven't been able to hear anything that you've said. I don't know what's going on with the sound system. I just heard Sandy. I heard Karen. We missed the report from Mr. Hopkins, but I care deeply about what is being said at the table, but I cannot hear. Your voice is not making it to those of us on Zoom.
Oh, we're done in here. Want to state any of that again, or we're good? Oh, we're done. So now we're at the public comment part of our...
While you still have the rules of procedure open, I have a recommendation to the board to make a revision to letter B on the first page. Right, this rules of procedure is intended to be re-adopted every year, and it hasn't been for a couple of years. But this revision, so part B is application. It currently states, "This policy setting forth rules of procedure shall apply to the select board of Brandon," which is referred to as, referred to below as the body. "These rules shall apply to all regular, special, and emergency meetings of the body." That's it in its entirety. So this is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns model policy that the Brandon Board adopted a number of years ago and re-adopted annually. There is a circumstance that happens from time to time in the town, which the league addresses as a best practice. So I would like to suggest that the board make it explicit and not just understood that, I would propose this language be added. "This policy shall also apply to all other elected or appointed public bodies of the town which have not adopted their own rules of procedure." So again, currently, the case is that the select board's rules of procedure do apply to all the other committees of the town that have not adopted their own, but this would just actually state that, so it was in black and white.
Pleasure. The board, we should readopt. Anyone second? Brian, seconds. Discussion? Let's move it. All in favor of readopting with the change to that line? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No one.
And Mr. Chair, also, while these are still open, the, for the board's information, there's a memorandum of understanding between the town and the chamber, which was executed. And the next board meeting, which is June 10th, we will need to not be in the auditorium here. The chamber will be using the auditorium to set up for the auction. So the rules of procedure call for the select board to meet at the town hall at One Conant Square. It actually specifies the basement meeting room, even though there was a board vote to move upstairs earlier this year. So I don't know how you feel about where you want to meet for, it'll basically be June for sure. The library has informed us that they expect to be turning the large room downstairs back to the select board on the first of October. So June, July, August, September is really what we're talking about, where the select board wants to be. You did have me, or you authorized me to make some inquiries around town at other meeting spaces. I did that. I think I reported that back to you when we were still meeting downstairs. The senior center was amenable to hosting, and the rescue squad was amenable to hosting. Or you could consider using the room downstairs again if you feel like it's sufficient for the number of public in attendance.
Want to make a motion, Brian?
Make a motion. We go down, back downstairs.
Motion in a second to go back downstairs for entirety or just a month of June until we...
Entirety.
Till we move back into our own room. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No one. This room is not where it comes in. Public comment. Not limited to two minutes. No public comment.
There's a lineup, a hand up.
Okay.
I don't know, who did they call? Hello?
We can't hear you.
Did you recognize me? I'm sorry. This is Claire. Clara Stone?
Look.
Yeah.
They're ready for you, Claire.
Okay, thank you. My question is, I'm wondering why you all are having a meeting on a federal holiday when there are working families that might have a three-day weekend together, or a two-day weekend, or maybe just an evening at home. Why are we having a select board meeting on a federal holiday? I don't understand it. You seem to do it every year, and it sort of feels disrespectful to what most of the country is doing, and why business has to be above family and time off. It doesn't seem to be a healthy thing. There are 29 other days. You can make the meeting whenever you want. All you have to do is warn for it, is my understanding. So that's my question.
Anybody want to take a shout out? Anyone?
Go for it.
We have met on the holiday every year. I'm not sure we have ever not had the meeting on both Memorial Day and Labor Day in the past. And I think for the board that has meetings on other nights of the week, this was a night that we could have a quorum. And I would like to highlight that we've met every single Monday this month, in the month of May, because of the board meetings and budget meetings. So we realistically didn't have another date we felt we could move it to. So that's the answer.
Maybe, this is my comment, my little aside, maybe you could consider not doing that in the future for the families in this town. I'm just putting that forward. Many people have families here. Thank you.
That's sufficient.
Yeah. Well, we meet also because we have to pay our bills. We could have had to have a special meeting to pay all of our bills, which would have still taken the time of the select board to come in. So as I say, I know that the last 10 years, we have met on the holidays.
For myself, I have little kids. I just finished dinner, so you know, I said, sorry, you can't keep that around when you're going to the select board. And that's not a woe for me. That's a, I just got an extra day, and so I feel less bad than I... So, I don't know.
But thank you for your comment. Okay, we are done. We are going into executive session. We're in five-minute recess till executive session starts.
I make a motion that we enter executive session regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee per one VSA 313 3A sub three to include Lisa Paluso applicant for the planning commission. I need a second. Do you want to?
We're coming out of executive session and ready for a motion on naming a planning committee person.
I make a motion, attempt. I make the motion that be appoint Lisa Paluso to the planning commission.
All in favor, say aye.
So we're on to item 13 now. So I move to find the premature general public knowledge of the pending contract negotiation with New England Police Benevolent Association, Local 422, will clearly place the town of Brandon at a substantial disadvantage by disclosing its negotiation strategy. And thus, I move to enter the executive session to discuss the town's pending labor relation agreement with the New England Police Benevolent Association, Local 422, per one VSA 313 A1B, for labor relations agreements with employees to include the town manager and the assistant town manager.
Aye.
Okay, now we're in executive session.
Eight fifty-one?
Coming out of executive session at eight fifty-one, no action taken. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Coolidge makes a motion. Second? Ralph will second because he's got the pen. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? No one.